Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to order. I would like to point out a couple of items. Out of courtesy for everyone, please silence your electronic devices. And we look forward to hearing testimony tonight, and appreciate you joining us. In an effort to have sufficient time to hear from audience members, we ask that when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes to allow us to hear everyone who would like to speak. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. Denise, please read the items on the consent agenda.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. Item one: Approval of the regular meeting minutes of February 6, 2019. Item two: February Platts. Item three A: Petition 9886-2019, rezone portions from the AG Agriculture District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District and O Office District for allowed forms located at the southwest corner of West 22nd Street and South Ellis Road. Item three B: Petition 9926-2019, rezone from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban and CN Conservation Districts for all forms located at the west corner of South Schaefer Avenue and South Silverthorn Avenue. Item three C: Petition 9928-2019, rezone from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the O Office District for allowed forms located at 3920 South Hawthorne Avenue. Item three D: Petition 9934-2019, rezone from the AG Agriculture District to the S1 General Institutional and Recreation Districts for allowed forms located at 6400 East 41st Street. Item three E: Petition 9799-2019, preliminary subdivision plan for Pine Knoll addition located at the southwest corner of West 22nd Street and South Ellis Road. Item four: Consent Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair, I'll need to recuse myself, please.
Are there, thank you Denise, are there any objections from the audience on the consent agenda items that you would like to have discussion on? Seeing none, are there any objections from the commissioners? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Madam Chair, can I make an amendment to the consent agenda? Because the applicant has requested that we defer item three B to the April 3 Planning Commission meeting.
Now we will vote.
Second, please.
Second.
Now we will vote on the amendment. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Now we will vote on the consent agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Items on the amended consent agenda have been approved. So if you were here for any of the consent agenda items, you are now free to leave. Now we will move on to the regular agenda. I need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second that.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to amend the regular agenda by moving item six H in front of six A.
We need a second.
Second then.
Now we will vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Now we will vote on the regular agenda as amended. Those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Item six H: Petition, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota amending the 2013 Shape Places zoning ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls.
Good evening. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is a staff application by the City of Sioux Falls Planning Department. We're looking at amending the 2014 Shape Sioux Falls, or excuse me, Shape Places zoning ordinance. The real gist of what we're looking at doing on this specifically ties to the MD2 form, which we all know is three-story apartments up to 48 units. And what we are proposing to do is actually take that from a Level B buffer yard, which it is right now when you're adjacent to single-family, that's a 15-foot setback. And we would increase it to a Level C buffer yard, which would give them a 30-foot setback. And then these three-story apartments that are adjacent to twin homes, townhomes, we would take them up to a Level B buffer yard, which would be a 15-foot setback. So that's really the gist of it. We did have a small little change to the ordinance that was presented to you guys, a little correction. So as part of the motion, we would like that, a motion to amend that section, and that is for the MD2 form. There's a provision in there for a five-foot reduction as part of parking within that buffer yard. As we move up to a Level C buffer yard, that should have been a 10-foot reduction. It should have got changed along with the buffer yard change. We forgot to add that in there, so we're requesting you guys to make that as part of the motion forwarded to the City Council. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this proposed change.
Commissioners, any questions for Jason?
Madam Chair, Jason, did we have meetings with developers and other interested parties, kind of walking them through this change, and then what were their comments on this?
Yeah, this specific ordinance, and you will hear the next person to come up, is Greg Knightsert, who's really spearheaded this ordinance. He had meetings with developers, he had meetings with citizen. As we all know with him, he does his homework, and he does his due diligence. So he can kind of run through how many people he met with, and what really his outcome was for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
And then Jason, you said adjacent to the twin home and those functions, it would increase to a Level B. That means it's Level A right now, right?
Currently it'd be a Level A, which is 10, and we'd go up to the 15.
Just wanted to verify that for the audience. Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Greg Knightsert, City Council. I'm the applicant actually that's bringing this forward. I have a presentation that's going to cover this item, and I'm going to try to keep it within five minutes to respect your time and your rules. So I'm going to go pretty quick. Really, the issue that we're looking at is that proposed apartments that will be three stories in size adjacent to a single-family create a unique concern because of their height and their scale. We've heard some of that concern. The issue that we're going to be looking at is the MD2 form, because the MD1 form is not in play, because it can only be two stories. That's the small apartment. MD2 is the issue, because it can be up to three stories in height, and it has a small setback. The MD3 form, which is the large-density apartment, already has pretty large setbacks, and it's very rarely that the planning department will recommend approval of those next to lower-density uses. So, the problem, the MD2 form is the only form in the zoning ordinance that can be three stories in this close to residential uses. Right now, it's a 15-foot setback with the Level B buffer yard, two-foot burn or four-foot fence when it's adjacent to single-family. That's even if the MD2 form is three stories in height. And I just went through, there's a number of three-story forms in the zoning ordinance, all of which have a significantly higher buffer yard requirement, and I'm not going to go through all of those. The proposed solution, and this really came about after a lot of thought and meeting with many developers, and really kind of going over what are the unintended consequences if we go too far? And there really are if we go too far. So I narrowly tailored this, and what I'm asking to do is to say that if the building, if the MD2 form is three stories, first of all, it has to be three stories, and it's contiguous to a lower-density form, that means it's touching, touching the property line. There's not a street in between. If there's a street in between, it's adjacent. If it meets those two requirements, the buffer yard bumps up. If it doesn't, it stays the same. So it's a Level B adjacent to single-family if it's two stories, or if it's touching. But only in that particular case, if it's right up against it, and it's three stories, are we going to ask to increase that buffer yard just a little bit, one tier up. And then the same with the twin homes and the fourplexes. The attached dwellings bumping up a little bit. So here's a really quick example, and I think you'll understand this. Essentially, just kind of showing the difference between adjacent and contiguous. So you can see there that where the Level C buffer yard would kick in down below, it wouldn't kick in when you have the street in between. And why not the street? Because the street provides a natural setback. So you've got the right-of-way in between, so that's going to help to, obviously, it already mitigates the height and the scale issues. So here's the proposed amendment, exactly what I was talking about, where we bump it up, saying if it's three stories and it's contiguous. I do need one small amendment, and then that's in that buffer yard reduction. I noticed that over the weekend as I was working on the presentation, that it says up to a five-foot reduction. And that's because the buffer yard standards say that for a Level B buffer yard, you can have up to a five-foot reduction if you have a parking adjacent to the lower-density use. But if we bump up to a C, then they can have up to a 10-foot. So we need to change this to 10 feet to be in harmony with, I think it's 16488, which is the buffer yard standards. So again, this is narrowly tailored. The reason for that is, I did go over, and I actually had slides that I had worked up, and I won't go through all of them, I won't go through those. I went through every single apartment rezone since Shape Places took effect. And then I narrowed in on the MD2 form. And I took a look, and I looked to see what would happen if we put different things in place, including this. And when you do this right here, every project would have worked. Every project does work. So in many cases, they're already doing, developers are already doing what I'm looking at here, where, for example, they put in a 15-foot setback when they needed a 10-foot. But if you go, if you get too out of line, and you do, let's say, a Level D, now projects stop working. And a lot, and most projects are going to go through with no, you know, problem whatsoever. Nobody comments on them, they're in developing areas. And the last thing we want to do is go too far, because as you know, we can always add conditions. If we have the outlier case where somebody comes forward, and we have a neighborhood that is really, really concerned, we can add conditions. We cannot remove requirements. These apply to everybody. The only way you can take a requirement away is a variance. And having been on the Board of Adjustment, it's incredibly difficult, and it should be, to get a variance. So I was very mindful of that. I didn't want to cause unintended consequences. I just wanted to address that one particular case where the citizens, the public just keeps, seems to be saying that there should be a little bit more setback, that 15 feet for a three-story apartment next to a single-family just doesn't feel right. It just feels like it should just be a little bit more. And that does kind of put it more in line, I think, with the rest of the zoning ordinance. And so we had a couple other minor changes while I was here. Essentially, this is just clarifying what really is the case, that common open space alternative plan shall not reduce any required buffer yard. It sounds like gibberish, but essentially, as you may know, a common open space plan says that if you put common space in the middle of your apartment complex, you put some playsets or whatever, you get a break on your setbacks. You can put your buildings closer to the street as a reward for putting common areas and some of those amenities. And this is just saying that you can't reduce the buffer yard. So if we say 30, it needs to be 30 feet, because we believe that buffer yards are important. That's the way that planning would have interpreted anyway, but it was really silent, and that just clarifies it. This is just one other really quick correction while I was here. This particular thing here says that you can get a variance if it's reviewed by the Board of Adjustment. Really, the word ought to be approved. I mean, for example, you are reviewing this application right now, but it doesn't mean you're approving it. So, just to clean up while I was here. Input solicited. City planning staff, sat down and talked to them, talked about history, some of that, what some things to think about. These are the multifamily developers that I met with. These were the ones that were happy to sit down, and I will tell you, they were thrilled to sit down and get input into it before something came forward. And it really did help to shape what I came up with, because where I started and where I ended was quite a bit different, because I was looking at some other things that would have been quite a bit more. But I really realized that I had to be really careful. But then also balancing the neighbors. And as you know, there's a huge variance. I have everywhere from "don't do anything" to "apartment should never be next to a single-family." I mean, so you have to try to figure out how to deal with that. The last thing I want to say real quick is that I do not want this to be construed as an anti-apartment ordinance. I've taken some tough votes on these, on apartments, on some of the major issues, because I felt very strongly that there are a place, we need multifamily. We need it. It should not, we can't just put it in the fringes of the city, in the middle of cornfields. It needs to coexist. We have to figure out how it can coexist, how we can do infill development. So this is not an attack on multifamily, not whatsoever. I've been a champion of multifamily. This is just trying to find a little bit more of a compromise. And again, if we have an issue where there is a major, major controversy, that's why we have the conditions that we can put on a rezone. And the regulations should not be dealing with the outliers, it should be dealing with everything. And so we have to be very careful. So I'm just asking for that, just one little tweak, one little increase. I appreciate your time, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Councilor Knightsert?
Madam Chair, not a question, but I appreciate you putting the presentation together and doing all the due diligence and your homework on it. Seems very well thought out to me.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I also appreciate that Councilor Knightsert, in reaching out to community members, reaching out to the building community, reaching out to all of those people. We always encourage that of the applicants, and so really appreciate you doing that homework as well.
Yeah, and I should mention, I am meeting with the home builders, I think, next week to present. They reached out as well, so we'll educate them on it as well.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone in the audience, else in the audience, that would like to speak on item six H? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval with the necessary change with regards to the five-to-10-foot difference. Second.
Is there any discussion?
As Madam Chair has stated before, it was, it's great to see that someone has become that prepared and worked with the public and the contractors on doing, making these changes, getting the agreement with them, from them.
Very thorough.
Now we'll vote on six H. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Denise, six A?
Six A is a petition, 9853-2019, rezone portions from the AG Agriculture District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, C3 Commercial Regional District, LW Live/Work District, RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District, and CN Conservation District for allowed forms located at 6200 East 41st Street.
The applicant here is Perry Cole. The owner is the Burns family. It's roughly 105.4 acres. The applicant is looking at rezoning this 100-plus acres, as you can see from the AG Agricultural District, to various districts, as Denise had indicated. And he's looking at constructing a future off, a future commercial office and residential development. This is kind of their current plan at this time. The proposed zoning does generally meet the designation of a business park within the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. The proposed rezoning plan provides those necessary transitions that we like to see from the proposed commercial uses that you can see on 33rd and Veterans Parkway and 41st and Veterans Parkway. Second, to the office and multifamily uses of the live-work districts. And then finally, to twin home, townhomes, and then to the existing, or to proposed single-family, and then to the existing single-family homes within the Copper Creek Residential Development. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls, staff does recommend, recommend approval of this rezoning. We have received several complaints from the neighbors and concerns on this specific, specifically on 33rd Street. Staff and the applicant did work together. One of their major concerns is the live-work designation. As we know, that allows office and apartment uses. The applicant is, doesn't know for sure if it's going to be office or apartments, but it does also allow the BCF3 and MD2 form, which are the three stories. The neighbors, some of the neighbors' concerns are specifically to have three stories next to the single-family, similar to what Councilmember Knightsert had indicated before. The applicant and staff have come up with a condition that we would like added to this specific rezone. We would like that 3.3-acre lot of live-work that's adjacent to 33rd Street, up in the upper north part of this, just adjacent to the commercial area. We would like that live-work zoning to not allow the MD2 or BCF3 form. That would still allow all the other forms, the two-story apartments, townhomes. And it would also allow the applicant to construct office, which is why he wants the live-work to be a little bit more flexible. If it's going to be a dentist office, or if he's going to do townhomes, to see what kind of the future holds for just that specific lot along 33rd Street.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Is the petitioner here?
Good evening. Perry Cole, at 4405 South Northridge Circle, here to represent the landowners. Be glad to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, just to make sure that what Jason was talking about with that live-work area, you guys are comfortable with the exclusion of the two forms we talked, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item, six A? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi there. Eric Sprinkle, 2709 South Mossstone. Got a presentation here. First off, I apologize, I may stumble through a little bit of this. I've had to try to do a little bit of homework on this. Unfortunately, I feel like, you know, first off, we didn't have any information from the landowner upfront, not a meeting, not anything, you know, letting us neighbors know what plan they may have out there. So we ended up getting a letter, and so here I am, trying to go through this with our arguments here. So first thing here, the Shape Sioux Falls adopted a business park on 41st and Highway 100. This is what we should expect, and we're asking for the Planning Commission to follow that. This rezone is designed as, based on the way it is right now, it's designed as a regional retailing area that runs from 33rd to 41st Street, not a business park. 33rd Street is a collector's street, not an arterial street, which is required for a business park. 60% of what's being proposed is commercial, well above what's been mandated, you know, the 15% to 25% commercial for business parks. It has no specific office zoning. It's a retail and multifamily plan, not a business park. The live-work allows commercial and office uses, which creates a Level 3 transition to existing housing. That C3 commercial is defined as community commercial, and it's not supported district for a business park. So from that, we've got the 2040 future land use, that boxed area, which is the 26th and Veterans Parkway and 41st and Veterans Parkway. The map shows a business park designation at the intersection of 26th and Highway 11 and 41st and Highway 11. This rezone application is geared to a regional retail area, and we're asking for denial for this reason. A business park center is typically at intersections of an interstate and/or a regional corridor. And as you can see, based on the Sioux Falls plan, that business park, which is located there in that higher zoning, is shown on arterial streets. Arterial streets carry high volumes of traffic. Arterials are usually sectioned line roadways. Based on the proposed, collector's streets as defined by the planning department, a collector's street carries traffic from local streets to arterial streets or highways. A collector's street usually is the principal entrance for residential development and streets for circulation in and out of the neighborhood. So basically, our big concern here is that our higher, the higher zoning is allowed and appropriately shown on the shape plan for the East 26th and the 41st Streets, which are regional corridors or arterial streets. But based on the proposal, there should be no commercial, office, or multifamily zoning shown in which is proposed right now on the Shape Sioux Falls. Again, 33rd Street is not a regional corridor, it's a collector's street. Higher zoning was not part of the adopted plan in this intersection, and should not be allowed. Part of that business park that was part of the Sioux Falls plan, it should be no more than 15% to 25% commercial. If you go to this here, total area outlined in black, 63 acres, which equals roughly 60% of the rezonance commercial property. That's not part of a business park, based on your guys' original plan through 2040.
You're at five minutes. Commissioners, do you have any questions? No? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on item six A? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Jeff Meredith, 2809 South Snowmass Avenue. I agree completely with what the gentleman just presented. He covered most of my points. The other point I guess I would like to make is when those neighborhoods on, from 41st to 26th were planned, there was really no huge, multi-complex apartments that were planned in the original things. Since then, there is a huge complex south of 41st and Highway 11, and there's another one up north of, between 33rd and 26th. And so my other question, I guess I would have, is how much multifamily, huge, complex ISORS do we need in our neighborhoods out there? I don't know who's even going to fill in those, but stay in those places. I mean, I don't think there's that many people to come into town this quickly. So I think there's, needs to be a little more forethought to things. It seems like the default is, whatever happens, we just build a multi-story apartment, and that's how we fill up land. So just wanted to add that, my thought to that. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Barrett? Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any, think to add to six A? Okay, come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. Brett Songstead, 2832 Granny Smith Place. I am a broker for a small real estate company in Sioux Falls that has sold some of the residential property in here. I just want to make one little briefcase. The zoning that the city puts forth is what, when I sell real estate, I'm selling lots that are by huge areas of very bare ground. What I'm telling people is, there is zoning to protect you. You know, coming down the road, I know you can't see anything, but here's what's going to be. coming down the road, you, I know you can't see anything, but here's what's going to be here. We have to put our trust in you that that doesn't change. And that's what I want everybody to realize. This is what's promised, it needs to be delivered. These changes are, they're big. And if you owned a house in there, I don't think you'd want this. So, I just want to remind the responsibility of the city and of here tonight is to do due diligence to what's been sold in there. And I also respect the Burns family, personal friends of mine. But, these clients that have put this money out, we need to protect their interests. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Songstead? No? Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to say, speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Heather Powell, and it's 6405 East 33rd Street. One other thing I think I'll add to what everybody else has said is, you know, the neighbors have been in a lot of conversation about this whole situation. And even if it's possible of not approving this, but even deferring and allowing the neighbors to have some communication with those involved in proposing this plan and being able to come up to some other options would be also very beneficial if that is an option, or there's other ways around that. We just never got that chance on the front end. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Ms. Powell? No? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to 6A?
Michael Bailey, 6308 and 6312 East 33rd Street. I'd like to reiterate what the first gentleman that made the big presentation, and all his points are accurate, and also the broker that was just up here. You know, I've built another, one other property on that street, and the values of the property are going to decrease on that East 33rd Street. It's, when we build the spec houses and we rely on our real estate agents to develop these different properties to help create tax basis for Sioux Falls and such, you know, when, one of the questions we get a lot of time is, what's going to go on that empty field across the street? And then we refer them to the, these, the plans that you guys put forth in the building Sioux Falls, future, future plans. And if we can't do that anymore, I don't really feel comfortable building next to an open cornfield anymore.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Bailey? Okay. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to 6A?
My name's Tyler Stuens, address 4204 North Colorado Avenue. I as well am a real estate agent with Amy Stockberger, Team Hague Realtors, representing Mike with PMT Construction. He builds quite a few spec homes out there. We did do an analysis, myself and Amy Stockberger looked. I just wanted to reiterate the values that will drop anywhere from 50 to 125,000 out there for home value. So I, I feel like that should be at the forefront of this as well. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Real quick on that one.
Mr., is it Stuets? Can you come back up?
Sorry, quick question on that. So your analysis also included the addition of a proposed middle school in this neighborhood?
Yeah, the, the parameters that Amy took in were the multifamily and where she came up with, with this, that's the number she felt comfortable with. So I guess I'm just relaying the, the numbers that she came up with. I didn't actually come up with these. She wanted me to come present these for her.
I'm sorry, she is?
Amy Stockberger.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? So, your contention is that every house in that neighborhood is going to drop by $125,000 if this rezoning takes place?
Well, here we have, it could drop anywhere between 50 to 125,000. It could negatively affect the property value.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none. Testimony is closed unless, do you have any, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I'd like to ask Jason to come back.
Sure.
Would you speak to the presentation with regards to what the development plan is as compared to what we heard?
Yep, yep, absolutely. It's a little, the business park node is 15 to 25% commercial on all four corners, not specifically each corner. So it's a total of 25% for the total, for the four corners. So if it's 160 to 320 acres, that's roughly around 80 acres of commercial in that intersection. The gentleman's point with the 33rd and Veterans Parkway not having a business park node, that's because that's not addressed as a future land use. That's already addressed in the conference of plan as a parcel that's within the city, so it's developed. So it's, that's why there's not a node there. It was just as part, it's not considered future land use, it's already there and already ready for development. Now, if it was outside the city, there may be a, a business park node on that specific area. As you look up and down Veterans Parkway with that being a new kind of big highway around the city, there's business park nodes at pretty much every intersection within that specific highway.
Okay, thank you.
And Jason, is that also why then it's C2? I mean, it's a lower scale of commercial and live-work up at the intersection instead of a, you know, C3 or C4?
Yeah, absolutely. With it being a major collector, I believe 33rd Street's about 80 feet wide, which, as we all know, a normal residential street, if it's single-family homes, is 66. So, that was designed and built by the developer as a larger street to handle more traffic because of the proposed or the future ideas of probably something other than single-family being adjacent to this street, specifically when you get over to Veterans Parkway. Otherwise, they would have designed that as a 66-foot street if that was all going to be zoned, single-family. And you can see to the west here, it was the Capelman's Land. I believe that came in front of you guys maybe a year and a half ago. Pretty similar plan to this. They have commercial at the 33rd and Veterans Parkway node, as well as 26th and Veterans Parkway. So it's a similar plan that was approved by the city council as this plan that the Burns family is proposing.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Madam Chair, I think this actually makes a lot of sense, the transition from higher-density commercial along Highway 100, then going east towards the residential with multifamily and then twin homes, and then single-family is kind of the buffer there. I think as a land use body, which is what we are, we have to look at, does, you know, that designation make sense at that spot? I think up at 33rd, the C2 and the live-work also makes sense as you transition into the single-family. And so I, I mean, I support it. And I will add an amendment then, to add the condition on that 3.3 acres of live-work on 33rd, that it exclude the MD2 and BCF3 form.
I'll second the amendment.
Any further discussion?
Well, on that one, Madam Chair, the other live-work that is, what, 6.35 acres, or is it 8.35? Can't quite read that. It looks like that's also backed right up to some single-family homes. That might be another one that might make sense to have that exclusion for the MD2 and the BCF2.
Maybe. I think the difference there is those are single-family that are part of this rezoning. So they'll go in with that, the known live-work being there versus ag land where, you know, you know it's going to come into the city in some form other than ag. I mean, it's not going to be, you know, part of the city is ag. It's going to change when it finally gets used, but that'll be a known before those homes get built.
But it would be consistent. I would agree with your suggestion, John, in regards to incorporating both in the same arrangement.
I might want to ask the applicant if they're comfortable with that, too.
Can the applicant come up?
Yeah, I think we'd be amenable to, you know, coming off the north line. Yeah, do you want to draw that? I'd say the north 300 feet, which would match up with that RD2 to the east. Kind of like he's got it sketched there. We'd go along with the same restriction that we went with up on that other one. Does that make sense?
For the northern third, or whatever that amount is.
Yeah.
I think that would address my thought, anyway. We can vote on that as a separate amendment after we vote on the current amendment.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion before we, oh, okay. So we're now voting on the amendment, the first amendment that Nick had, and that Kurt seconded. So all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we need a motion on the second amendment?
I would make a motion for a, an amendment to change that amount of the northern third approximately of the live-work that is the 8.33 acres to also have that same exclusion for MD2 and BCF2.
Okay.
Second?
BCF3.
Or BCF3. Thank you, Nick.
Okay.
He seconded.
John seconds, okay. Any discussion on that amendment?
I appreciate the applicant being open to that.
Now we'll vote on the second amendment. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. And now we are ready to vote on the, do we vote now for the overall? Okay. 6A?
Discussion, perhaps?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I like the, I agree with some of the other comments already made, but I like the way that, for example, RA3 is kind of nestled into the middle of the complex. It does represent some reasonable transitional uses to help buffer those kinds of functions. And so, really, this layout seems pretty logical, and having the C3 on the higher arterial Streets, that's all pretty good planning. And so, this, this appears to, in general, meet some decent planning considerations. So I'm in support of it with the amendments we've made.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify maybe for the audience, they might be a little confused on what you guys are voting on now. So I just wanted to clarify that real quick. So the motion that's on the table is to limit the 3.3 acres of live-work that's adjacent to 33rd, and then that 300-foot section that's within the center portion of this, to not allow the MD2 or the BCF3 form. And it's a motion to approve with those conditions. So I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve 6A?
I think you already have it.
We have a motion. We're still in discussion mode.
Okay. Any further discussion? Sorry. Awesome. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Okay, those opposed, say no. Motion carries with the two conditions. Thank you.
Item 6B, petition 9932, 2019, rezoned from the C2 commercial neighborhood and streetcar district to the RA3 apartment residential high-density district for allowed forms located at 1901 West 85th Street.
The applicant here is Michael McGillic, the owner's running companies. As you can see, this is at the southeast corner of 85th and southwestern avenue. The applicant is proposing to rezonate roughly 4.6 acres. It's currently zoned commercial, which would allow retail, gas stations, that kind of uses. And they're looking at rezoning it to the RA3 to, to construct a three-story senior living facility. These will be rentals for seniors 55-plus, with roughly 120 units split up into two phases. The proposed building will be required two 25-foot setbacks and one 20-foot setback off the three streets. They can pick and choose which ones they want the 25, and which one they want the 20. I know, we did receive some calls from the neighbors out there. It seemed like most of their concerns were parking. They were, they were concerned about people at this complex parking on the cul-de-sac to the east. The applicant did have a neighborhood meeting, and I believe answered most of those questions. And just to kind of run through, to hopefully alleviate the concern of the neighbors about parking, what they're required for parking is .75 spaces per unit because their elderly are senior apartments. And that would come out to roughly 90 parking spaces required. This concept plan indicates 130 parking spaces will actually be, be below the building, underground parking. And then they will have 90 actually surface spaces that they're proposing. So they're proposing well over double what they're required for parking. So they should have the adequate parking, and, and hopefully that will not, they will not be parking within the existing residential neighborhood. They will be required that level-C buffer, buffer yard along the east side. And as we heard with the amendment, that will be a 30-foot setback. They're accounting for this on their plan with an additional probably around 10 feet, so it looks like it's around 40 feet. And they will have that four-foot berm or six-foot fence in those 40 units of landscaping. Their buffer yard they're showing here in landscaping is, is pretty indicative of what probably will happen out there. And then the maximum height of this, adjacent to single-family, they would be allowed to do the 45 feet in three stories. The, the proposed zoning meets the Shapes Sioux Falls comprehensive plan designation of a neighborhood employment center. As we know, some of the supportive districts within this employment center include multifamily residential uses. Further, that concept plan does indicate that level-C buffer yard and some additional setback that should hopefully alleviate some of the incompatibilities with those existing single-family homes. And as I indicated, if this rezoning is approved, they can construct their three-story senior apartment facility. If it's denied, this will continue to be zoned C2 and allow uses as a gas station, restaurant, grocery store, office, and other, other retail uses. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shapes Sioux Falls comprehensive plan, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jason?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Jason, the, so the ordinance change that we sent forward to city council a couple items ago, this has already been planned, assuming that's in place?
Yep, with the way that they have their buffer yard, the 30-foot, they're showing the level-C 30-foot buffer yard, so.
So that's, it's not a condition we'd need to put on there?
No, be, by the time, well, if everything goes forward and is approved with Councilmember Nightser's ordinance, by the time they would be able to buy it, pull a building permit, that would be effective. So they need to account for that specific change, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Frankie Pane, P-A-N-E, 11606 Nicholas Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here representing the petitioner, which is Essex Communities out of Omaha, Nebraska. And I would love to entertain any questions you might have to help you understand what we're proposing.
Commissioners, any questions for the petitioner? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item? Okay. Seeing none. I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay.
Madam Chair, I think it's a natural location for this, and I think the underground parking would alleviate most of the concerns by the neighbors, so I'm in support.
I also, Madam Chair, appreciate the scale that it appears this has been laid out to. Yes, it is three stories, but it isn't a really bulky building. In the way that they've laid it on the site, it looks to be fairly conducive to the rest of the, the neighborhood, and I appreciate that kind of planning.
Perfect. Well, we'll go ahead and vote on 6B. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item 6C, petition 9802, 2019, conditional use permit for a full-service restaurant establishment located within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 2113 South Minnesota Avenue.
The applicant here would like to serve beer and wine along with his recently opened Ethiopian restaurant. As we know, this was a holdover from last month. The applicant is here tonight. So, staff, because the Staff, because the application provides clarity to indicate the location and intent of the work proposed, and it's a full-service restaurant, which has been there for, it's separate, it's a full-service restaurant was there before, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Jason? No, thank you. Is the petitioner here? Can you come forward and state your name and address?
My name is Chani Leben. The address is two one one three South Minnesota Avenue.
Would you like to add anything to what Jason said? No, okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the petitioner? No? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to item six C? No? Okay. So the testimony is closed. I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval of item six C.
Second.
Any discussion? So all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Item six D, petition ninety eight ninety twenty nineteen, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment located within five hundred feet of a sensitive land use located at thirty four oh one west eighty fifth street.
The applicant here is Brian Solberg with Common Land LLC. The applicant is looking, are there's going to be two future strip centers and one bank constructed on this lot? The applicant is looking to, as one of those tenant spaces within this proposed strip malls, he's looking at constructing an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment, a casino. And that would be the southwest portion of the second building along the west side of this parcel. There is an existing single family uses, if we look at the map, about four hundred and fifty, or excuse me, four hundred and fifty feet to the west on the other side of those apartments. And we do have some existing twin homes to the northwest, they're about three hundred and fifty feet away. As you can see with this map, Albert has put the five hundred foot kind of separation distance on here to kind of give you an idea of, of where those sensitive land uses are located. The proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment, establishment, excuse me, generally meets a criteria of the comprehensive plan designation of a neighborhood employment center. These employment centers are generally located on the intersection of two arterials, which this is, this is eighty fifth and South Louise Avenue. And contain retail uses including on-sale alcoholic beverage establishments. If you go up and down Louise or eighty fifth, there's several other ones on the site. However, as most of you may know, if you were on the planning commission, we had a similar request on the lot to the northeast, that strip center that's constructed. There was significant neighborhood opposition to that specific on-sale alcohol establishment. However, the planning commission did vote eight to zero to approve that at their September first two thousand fifteen meeting. However, that was appealed by the existing residents to the west. And that was, that went in front of city council and it was denied for a one to six vote. Therefore, staff feels that the council has deemed this intersection of Louise intersection to be unsuitable location for the on-sale alcohol. However, if the planning commission would decide to approve this request, the tenant space should be oriented away from the residential uses and security management plan should be approved prior to the license being issued. I believe that the, the applicant, if this is approved, has, has done that with putting it kind of as far away from those twin homes to the northwest. Since the time of the staff report, the, the applicant has conducted a neighborhood meeting. I believe they did it at one of their other establishments to kind of run through their plan, what they, what they do for their specific casinos, to get feedback from the neighbors. The indication from him is that, is that went well. And so as a staff recommendation, although those requests generally meets the shapes who follows comprehensive plan, staff does feel that the eighty fifth and Louise intersection is not a suitable place for on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment based on that previous denied request by the city council, the northeast corner. So we are recommending denial, however, with that applicant neighborhood meeting. With them, they, they say they have addressed the neighbors' concerns and we, if we hear from neighbors that they still have concerns. If not, staff, staff is not opposed to this being approved as long as the neighbors have, are, have had their concerns answered and they're no longer adamantly opposed to this kind of a use at this intersection, so.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you. Is the petitioner here? Come forward and state your name and address.
Hello, Brian Solberg, three thirty North Main.
Do you want to add anything to Jason's?
I would add, referring to the other corner that went in front of the planning commission of the city council several years ago, I think one of the persons that was opposed to that, I think she had said that, you know, she'd be on board with this site, that, you know, I don't have her name with me right now, but, you know, we're going to do everything we can to operate a, a good location and we have, register a security plan with the police department and we're very interested in having good security and good, you know, mini cameras and things like that. We don't want to run a bad establishment. I mean, we want what we do in there, which is a casino and, you know, we don't want a bar and we don't want the atmosphere. And I personally think it's a good location here. We have forty, Louise and eighty fifth street, which as you know, and sometimes is going to open up to the interstate, I mean, it's going to be a busy, busy intersection. I just think it's a, it's a very suitable location. I have other locations and I feel that, you know, we run them very well. And we don't want problems, just nobody wants problems and we certainly don't want, so we do whatever we can not to have any kind of problems, so. I just feel it's suitable.
Commissioners?
Could you talk about the concerns that the neighbors had at your meeting that you addressed?
Yes, we, um, you know, I, you know, some of it was the fact that it was just a, a commercial lot with traffic and things like that. One person addressed the fact that there's that casino sitting there and, you know, if we build that, it kind of sits there by itself and they felt that, you know, and if, and if no other businesses were in there, they felt it's vulnerable and maybe it'll attract crime or something like that. And personally, the, with my partner developing that site and, you know, we're not going to develop it until we have other tenants. You know, we certainly wouldn't build that building with just us in there, that wouldn't work financially, so. That's how we address that issue, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? For the petitioners? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item?
Charlotte Miller, thirty four thirty seven West Eighty Fourth Place. I was at the, the meeting last Wednesday night with Mr. Solberg and with the Lloyd Companies and two other individuals. I live in a twin home association of, of thirty homeowners. And we are just north of eighty fifth there. The other night, we, we listened to the situation and decided that if this project were approved, what we are trying to do is play a little defense here, to be very honest with you. We also have a parcel of land directly to the east of us, which would be on the northwest corner of the eighty fifth and Louise intersection. It is due to be developed also. And that particular parcel of land would be immediately in our back or side yards within a hundred feet. We certainly do not want a casino there. And so we thought, okay, perhaps having the casino in the proposed location, which would be about, I suppose, four hundred and fifty feet from us, would be the lesser of the two evils. So while we were not really in favor of the casino, this was just simply, what can we do here that is the least obtrusive? To be very honest with you, I was the person who spoke before this same group in two thousand fifteen and we have, we have Mr. Zershen who is, who is probably recognizing me. And tonight I am just speaking extemporaneously, do not have anything prepared for you folks. I did have a phone conversation with Kevin Nyberg on Friday afternoon. And Mr. Nyberg owns the property just to the south of eighty sixth street, which would be the entrance to this property. He stated that he has three concerns. One, loitering. Two, smoking outside of the, the proposed casino. And then just a, an, a bias that, of, about casinos. With us here tonight is a neighbor who is a client at the Loft Salons, Hair Salons, up on approximately seventy fifth street, right next door to Connections Casino, which has gone in within the last couple, three months. And the management and staff at that particular salon is really concerned about their safety. They are open evenings. They are wondering whether they need to lock their doors just to make sure about their own, own safety. I had another person from our homeowners association talk about safety when you're out walking at night. And I know that, that those are concerns. I just, I just wish that the people who were here earlier talking about the thirty third street situation were here now. I think I, well, we already have a large apartment complex, which will be just west of this proposed project. You know, I would take, I would take a, a large apartment complex before I would a casino. And I, I know that the Deuces Casinos, I, I have the addresses, three seventeen Northwest Avenue. I don't know whether they are exactly in a residential area or not. I, I truly have not driven these to, to scope that out. West Forty First Street, I don't think it's, it's near any residential. East Arrowhead Parkway, I don't think so. Forty seven oh nine East Twenty Sixth Street, that is in a commercial. There is only.
Ma'am, your five minutes is up.
Oh dear, okay. Anyway, I'd really appreciate your consideration of what the staff has already prepared for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to this issue?
Raquel Blount, one oh one South Reed Street, Sioux Falls. I apologize with my voice. I just would like to speak a little bit on behalf of the development. We are, if approved, moving forward to develop two point seven five acres of land here, so, you know, of that, this is a, a small piece to, to the project. The site plan itself is conceptual in concept. So, for example, that bank may not be a bank. That could be a coffee shop, that could be a Arby's, you know, quick serve restaurant, could be a salon, yeah, a salon. So this is, this is a concept plan, but, you know, we're excited to provide more services to, to the area and things that, you know, fit into this type of, of zoning. So we think, you know, we've done this on several other locations. One that was referenced was Arrowhead Parkway. That, that is part of the Aldi development, you know, next to that neighborhood by the Walmart and very, very nice looking project. Aspen Denal and a bank were part of that and actually, you know, same developer and they will own this site, so they, they want the property well maintained, well taken care of and, and the buildings themselves to, to be very nice. A question was asked earlier, you know, some of the concerns that were addressed. And I've heard the term, you know, alcohol or liquor. This is just malt beverage, so this is not an alcohol license, it's just a malt beverage license. And I know one particular person who attended our, our meeting was very pleased to hear that. She just felt that that made a, made a big difference to, to her and what some of her concerns were, so.
Commissioners, do you have any questions from his vote? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? No? With that, testimony is closed and I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Madam Chair, as, you know, as I look at the role of the planning commission, I see us as a land use body and does this spot of land make sense for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment? Yes, it does, in my opinion, eighty fifth and Louise, there is a, a very busy intersection. And it wouldn't surprise me if you're going to see other bars or restaurants in that area as well that are going to probably come through the same process. So and, you know, I look at the planning commission as land use, the city council has maybe more of a political bent to when they make decisions, but from my point of view and looking at the land, I would say this makes sense there.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, could I ask Jason a question, please?
Sure.
I know you can't forecast the future, but with regards to that other location that was referred to, what would that look like in regards to compatibility factors and some of the other things you've mentioned with regards to the site we're considering?
Yeah, great question. I could see the site developing in a similar way with the strip centers and a bank. However, with the twin homes being adjacent to it and obviously this site has apartments or the southeast corner that hasn't yet to be developed, where you're probably going to get some better transitions, those are probably two corners that are a lot better suited for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment instead of the northwest corner because of the increased density on the southwest corner. Obviously, we can't forecast if one's going to try and go there. I would assume probably not with, with what has gone on in this specific intersection, but we never know until we get a request. That request comes in front of you, you all, so. And then I wanted to say one thing, because I did get an email from Mr. Nyberg to the south at, after five today, so I wasn't able to get that to you. And so I just wanted to reiterate what he said. He's, he said he doesn't have any objections to the casino. He just is making sure that the setbacks and screening for the proposed retail center will be, will meet the ordinance essentially, so I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Any other questions for Jason? Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that the plan that we were shown really doesn't show those setbacks and those buffer yards and all those kinds of things, but they will need to meet those as it goes through further review. I also appreciate the fact that it looks like police and fire and traffic have all looked at this, so again, having their kind of at least review of that to determine that there is a viable kind of security plan that'll eventually be finalized is comforting to know that all of that extra detail is being worked out with the city authorities.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second on six D. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Item six E, petition ninety nine twenty nine twenty nineteen, conditional use permit for an off-site parking lot located within two hundred and fifty feet of a D D or A D form located at four thousand one South Hawthorne Avenue.
Good evening, Albert Schmidt, St. Sioux Falls Planning Office. So this is for.
So, this is for an off-site parking lot, which requires a CUP whenever you're within 250 feet. So, there's approximately two or three different houses out there that kind of kicked this over to this location. For this specific property, the petitioner is Arthur and Jackie Peterson, Krenz. And then the owner is actually a separate person, Greta Carter, who's selling this property to them. So, again, this with the recommendation for approval on the rezoning to the property of the east is kind of goes along with that as they've anticipated needing the additional space for staff and overflow parking. So, we've looked at the area, talked with them about how to make it safer. And they've identified that with this site plan, we could incorporate a pedestrian walk to get people from this off-site parking lot to the location where they're going to go in a more direct and safe manner. So, just for your own knowledge, when you look at a crosswalk like this, we've looked through engineering, talked to traffic about it. And they've said it's a very simple request. It's mid-block. There's no issues from their side of not being able to do it. So, it's a very simple installation of a few things. And then the city will come out and actually stripe that and put signs up. So, it'll be a minimal pedestrian crossing at this point unless the applicant wants to put the funding forth to increase that to a higher level, which based on the traffic counts on the existing road right there, it's probably not going to be something that you're going to be rushing to do right away, if ever. But this location, it's .32 acres. Used to have a house on it. House got demolished in 2015. It's adjacent to an apartment and then a small business on the north side. They're with more retail on the west side. So, we don't have any issues from a staff perspective recommending approval.
Thank you, Albert. Is there, are there any questions, Commissioners, for Albert?
Just real quick, Albert. So, the proposed dance studio has not been constructed yet either? It's going to be in the blank?
Correct. They'll do these simultaneously at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Albert. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening. I'm Arthur Krenz with Dance Gallery, 218 South Main Avenue. As we're looking at doing a new building, one of our main reasons for doing it, right now, we're currently located just right over here on Main Avenue, and parking is getting extremely difficult. Basically, there's a shortage. And so, as we're looking for sites, this one, we were able to fit our building on with the required amount of parking. And in looking at the lot across the street, it was for sale, or is. And we decided to make the investment into the additional parking so we would be over and above what's required to make sure that we have enough for our customers. There's an existing wood fence around the lot. Our plan is to leave that on the sides that face the neighbors and open it up to the street side for security reasons. There's quite a few existing trees on the lot. We want to try to maintain as many of those as we can. Haven't investigated to see how many of them are an ash tree. But we'll save as much as we can as well as meet the other landscape requirements.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the petitioner? No? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. I will entertain a motion from the Commissioners.
A motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I think this is, you know, to have off-site parking is always a challenge. But this seems to be a really logical choice, having it directly across from the other end of the building. Very conducive to maybe employees or other things. So, this is really some good planning. So, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I'd add that having a place where kids go that people recognize additional parking is going to be needed to go above and beyond what's required, I think is great too. So, I commend you guys on that. And it will also be nice to get the parking spots here back when we have our meetings, so. I support it.
On American Bandstand, they say that this has a good beat and you can dance to it.
Good pun, John. Okay, we have a motion and a second on 6E. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Item 6F, petition 9920, 2019, additional development plan for Vera McKinnon Hospital, main campus located at East 20th Street and South Cliff Avenue.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself.
The petitioner on this one is Damian Gribble. And the owner is a Vera McKinnon. So, this is 64, it's over 64 acres of their existing main campus off of Cliff Avenue. They are looking at coming together. It's zoned S2. It's for a vast majority of it. Minor one parcel in the future will get rezoned. But majority of that right now is zoned S2. This coincides with another rezoning we just did not too long ago to an area 2S2 on the southwest corner for the future additional housing that they want to put down there for the Presentation Sisters. And so, this initial development plan incorporates everything that's built there today and what they have planned in the future, which at this point right now is that additional housing for the Presentation Sisters. The plan goes into explicit detail on a lot of items. And so, the initial development plan that you see in front of you carries forth a lot of very specific things to help us as staff identify what's appropriate in the future so that if they don't want to come and make amendments when we do final development plans, which are done administratively, it's very clear to you, to them, to anybody from the public, adjacent property owners, what we can do without amending the plan. One of the biggest benefits and why we push these so much is this allows us to treat multiple properties, multiple locations within a general area as one area. So, shared parking, shared signage plan, moving some things from, you know, where you might want less signage on the south side, you want to push it more to the north. That's an option here. This particular plan doesn't include the signage aspect, does include the parking, and it does include overall building heights so that if existing structure footprints need to expand up in the future, this kind of sets the stage so that that's able to be done without having to do a major coming back. But again, if they want to make amendments to this plan, then they would come forth again, and we'd have this discussion again. So, the current plan they show here does an excellent job of showing the different pedestrian and vehicular methods through the campus. One particular area that I'm very happy to see in this one was they have a unique function or feature to Sioux Falls in the Skyway system that helps pedestrians elevate above the vehicular traffic and get around there. This plan does an excellent job of showing how that exists today and how you could walk from the parking ramp out to your different buildings without having to actually either go outside in the cold weather when it's negative 20 or have to cross the street, especially if you're slower, you need a little more time. You don't want to have to have that interaction with active traffic that's going on. But yet, it also shows all the existing sidewalks in that area and shows the connectivity that at grade or at street level you have for those pedestrians as well. So, those things are done very well. When you look at the detail that's in the plan, we've identified heights for buildings to accommodate currently, A, what they are today, and B, try to appreciate or view and look what could maybe happen in the future to allow for some minor changes. But yet, taking into consideration the existing single-family houses and other uses around there that are a little more susceptible to these high buildings. So, we limit those heights a little bit more than we would in the interior of the campus. So, if you look through the plan, they identify buildings, parking lots. The height side of things is really geared towards allowing the taller areas more towards the center and more towards arterial streets rather than next to the existing houses, which would be more susceptible to being affected by those. So, a lot of it's pre-existing. So, this plan just helps us incorporate what we know is there today. And then it helps the neighborhood anticipate what could be there tomorrow. A lot of times with hospitals, with any of these functions, you don't know for sure what's going to get built and how it's going to get built there yet. So, this initial development plan is a wonderful first step. But if the new buildings are going to come online, we would see amendments to this to show those buildings at the time that they, it's proper and it makes sense to show those for the specific location. So, staff is recommending approval on the very long report and this specific plan. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take it.
Commissioner?
Albert, did they specifically talk about signage around the perimeter and within the plan?
So, in this specific plan, we don't have a signage master plan. So, when you don't have a specific plan, just like we don't have a landscaping plan, then anything that goes on there is very site-specific. So, with the Presentation Sisters going on, any signage, any landscaping has to be to our ordinance for that kind of use, for that form on that site. So, going back to parking, if we didn't have a campus-wide parking, then I wouldn't be able to take and say, hey, look, you have a couple hundred extra spaces up here. And yeah, you know that the nuns, you know they're not going to, you know, maybe five of them driving, however many drive. You know how many you need to have for that space. And you fit that in. But if our minimum code says you have to have 30 spaces and you only have 15 on site, if you don't have a master plan for the parking, you got to figure out how to get 15 more spaces on there. But with this master plan, then they don't have to do that. They can say, hey, look, by all the calculations we have, we have extra spaces. And I'll go on to say too that with this plan, this allows a lot of leeway, given that you provide enough information to us. So, if we do specific studies later on to kind of go, hey, look, there's a lot of overlap in all these buildings that we have. We don't need a 1 to 500 ratio for every single building because if a patient comes in and parks here, they may visit two different buildings in this X amount of timeframe. Therefore, based on this study, and, you know, as long as that data makes sense, we can even root it further as long as it, you know, makes a lot of sense. But no sign plan, no landscaping plan. So, site-specific at the time that they come in to actually do those final development plans.
Right, so they have to meet all ordinances? They have to go through the regular process to get approval?
Yes, most of that stuff's all administrative and they'd have to get approved to approve this.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Albert. Is the petitioner here?
Tom Bosch, 5201 South Stockwell Circle, here on behalf of Vera McKinnon. So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm just here to answer any questions at all. I think the staff did a wonderful job of explaining everything.
Do you have anything to add, or no?
No, no, he kind of covered it all, so, yeah.
Awesome. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Bosch?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none. The testimony is closed, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, 6F.
Second.
Discussion?
I appreciate staff's comprehensive explanation of this one. And I think with the extra parking comments, it's good to know the Presentation Sisters will have extra capacity for summer cars, it sounds like, if they so choose to go that route, so. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I also appreciate the commentary about the walkability of the site. And the skywalks are a great piece of that whole system. And you can see in that plan that that is well planned out. And I appreciate that of both of the hospital systems. They seem to have a very walkable campus, which is always a huge concern for us.
Okay, we have a motion on the table for 6F in a second. We'll go ahead and vote. All of those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 6G, petition 9864, 2019, preliminary subdivision plan for Burns Edition located at the northeast corner of South Veterans Parkway and East 41st Street.
We'll go through this one pretty quickly. This is obviously the preliminary subdivision plan that went along with our 6A, item 6A, on the irregular agenda. The Burns family is looking at subdividing their 105 acres for future residential office and commercial development. At the time of this report, we did have just a few little minor tasks left to be completed through the plan review process for preliminary subdivision plans. Therefore, we do recommend approval of this preliminary plan. And since that only minor tasks remain, we are recommending approval to be forwarded to the City Council. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Those two modifications that we made previously, do those affect this significantly, other than just kind of how you manage them?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, if we would have limited it down to, you know, twin homes, then maybe it would have affected size of streets because it'd be less traffic impact. But I don't see how that would really do much to this specific plan. This is kind of just getting, as we know, preliminary lot and block layout. Once we get into the development engineering plan and that stuff, that's really where they'll kind of get into the traffic counts and things like that. So, I think we should be okay with what they have here and what you guys are approving.
Very good, thank you.
Madam Chair? Just one thought. It might be helpful to, when we have two of these on the agenda that are kind of covering the same area, to do them back to back. So, I think some of the neighbors would have helped them to see this, to see where the street is going through, that it isn't anywhere going to connect to their residential on the north side of 33rd. You know, it comes out well to the west of where those houses are. I think that would have alleviated some of their traffic concerns as well, but.
And I 100% agree. Now that we see this one, it's kind of like, yep. So, next time, we'll have to have you guys probably move these two together. As part of our bylaws, they have to be separated. But definitely, that seems like a very good idea. Hopefully, then, they can see both aspects of it, so.
Also, an opportunity for conversations with the neighbors.
Yep, absolutely.
Perfect. Any other questions for Jason? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Again, Perry Kolb, 4405 South North Ridge Circle. Love to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the petitioner?
I'll just make my comment again. I think there's an opportunity to communicate with the neighbors, obviously. And would I see you doing that going forward is my question.
What's that? Sorry?
Would, we would be interested in your comments about that going forward.
Interested in the comments about neighbor-
Communication with the neighbors.
Communication with the neighbor. I guess we kind of felt we had a pretty pat plan that followed the ordinance fairly well. I guess from my personal perspective, I'd rather you be the arbiters rather than us listening to a bunch of ideas. I guess that's my personal thought. Maybe I'm wrong. But I guess what would you suggest on that, in that area?
Was there ever a meeting or any kind of communication?
The notice.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the process is set up to address, I guess, comments. I'm not sure what we would have been able to tell them, you know, in any. I guess we didn't, no one really, yeah, do you want to add to that?
I think what John's trying to ask is going forward, there's still some neighborhood concerns. Would it be beneficial for the applicant and the owners to maybe set up a neighborhood meeting? I absolutely think that it would be a good idea to do that before we do get to second reading at City Council. You don't want it to keep snowballing. You want to try it at least. It's not, neighbors like to hear their voices, their concerns being voiced, and you actually take those to heart. I think you've done some of that by that live work lot agreeing to take those down. But anything you can do from this point to when it gets to second reading at City Council is only beneficial for the applicant and the owners, even if nothing changes with the plan. I think it's important, specifically, the City Council does like to continue to reach out to the neighbors. So, I would suggest trying to. And maybe you can meet with just some specific spokesmen or something. I think it's a good idea. Not required, but a good idea, so.
Understood.
And so, with that, I'll sit and visit with Albert and Jason, and they can steer me right.
Sure.
That sounds great.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Testimony is closed, and I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Discussion?
The lot layout and the street, that's well beyond, I think, my ability to pass judgment on where it should be. So, I listen to the experts at the city that say that's where it should go. And if that's what they say, I support it.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on 6G. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Item 6I, petition and ordinance of the- Item 6I, petition and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the 2013 Shape Places zoning ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls.
This is another one of our Shape Places zoning ordinance amendment that was compiled by myself, Shawna Goldhammer, and then another zoning person named Jack Clausen. These are some amendments, as we like to do, as I indicated at the briefing, we like to do these every nine to 12 months, just to kind of revisit Shape Places, see things that are working or not working, and bring forward some amendments to you and to the city council. So I'll quickly run through some of the major highlights. We're looking at doing some definition changes and additions, just really changing the definition or amending the definition for bed and breakfast, and just making it to separate them from short-term rentals. We seem to get, people seem to get those two confused, the short-term rentals, as we call Airbnb, which is airbed breakfast. And then bed and breakfast are a little bit different animal. That's your traditional ones where somebody lives at the house, provides meals to their guests. So we're trying to separate those. Just for a point of how many, we do have three existing bed and breakfasts in Sioux Falls that are registered with the state. And then obviously, we have a lot of short-term rentals, Airbnb things. So we're just trying to clarify those. We're also looking at adding a definition for primary form. That would be forms that are most commonly used and best represents the category of a zoning district. As you can see, this is kind of our form sheet that we like to give to citizens, developers, kind of a quick sheet about what's allowed, what's not allowed, what forms. And so we've already had primary as an identified on this sheet. We just never had a definition for it. And so we're adding that in there, and it's specifically for when you're developing against property that's vacant. We really run into it when it's a live-work district. If it's a live-work district, it allows so many uses. It allows twin homes all the way up to a Sanford huge campus or a Vera huge campus. And so the way the ordinance is written is if you're constructing, you know, 57th and Sycamore, if you're constructing a gas station and you're next to land that's live-work, you have to buffer as if it's going to be twin homes, which we all know it's probably not going to be twin homes. So we're trying to, the reason why we're creating that then is now you would buffer, you would assume that it's either going to be BCF1, which is office, which, or it would be an MD2, which is an apartment. That's what you would assume is going there. Otherwise, some of these landscaping requirements that we're requiring people to put in for something that's probably could be a compatible, exactly compatible use in the future is getting a little bit outrageous. So we're just trying to still protect because single-family is still, the primary form is single-family, twin home, primary form is twin home. We're still protecting them. We're also not requiring people to buffer, you know, for more than what they actually need to. So that's why we're trying to create that. Some form amendments we're doing, one of the big ones we're looking at doing is to allow accessory daycare centers in MD forms, so those are apartments. We've really found the need, specifically from the Boys and Girls Club, they are going out actually into these apartment complexes, which is kind of cool, and turning a lot of the community rooms that people don't utilize actually into daycare centers after school care. So what their mission, what they're trying to move forward to is instead of going and getting the kids and driving them back to their specific centers, they're going to where the people need these, which they're finding amazing success with getting more kids to utilize them, and then also, you know, providing snacks and meals and utilizing them longer to after 6:00, 7:00 PM when some of these parents can get home from work. So I think it's a great program, what they're doing, and hopefully more people will follow suit. And what we can do to allow them to do that seems like a good mixed use for these apartment complexes. We're also looking to add AD4 form, which is the attached dwelling converted houses that we see in some of the core area to the RA1 zoning district. Really, the only reason why we're doing that is we have a lot of properties within the core that are converted houses that we have zoned RA1, and it's really puts extra time and strain on staff, and also the owners of these houses to come in and rezone these to RT2, when, why wouldn't we just allow it when it's already zoned for an apartment? So it seems pretty smart. Bed and breakfast standards, you know, as you look through the ordinance, they're in every single section, every form. Well, why do they need to be in every form? So we're just going to move those back to the conditional use standards, because you have to do a conditional use. So why not have them in the standard? So that just saves 10 pages or whatever the case may be. And then we also have a lot of churches that are in the NF1 form, you know, residential areas. These churches, so the NF1 form is a 35-foot height limit. A lot of them have spires, steeples. That's not really, it's not really the added heights. We're just kind of exempting them out for these places of worship to allow them to have higher steeples and spires. And then also allowing assisted living facilities as permitted use in our downtown area, instead of requiring them to be conditional uses or above the first floor. It just really didn't make many much sense. And then we're also doing some landscape buffer yard changes. One of the main ones that we've ran into is the ordinance required us to screen drive-throughs from the public right of way. And if you've seen some of these, like specifically the new Chicken Places we've run into, they require them to put fences. Well, we don't want fences running across 12th Street and make it look like, you know, a compound. So we want to be able to allow the right for them just to put some ornamental trees to screen the drive-through, but still not put a four-foot fence and just do that. We also wanted to allow trees to be grouped or clustered, but we do want to maintain a minimum separation distance to make sure that they can survive and be healthy. And then we also run into a lot with overhead power lines where they've been planting, require, we have to plant deciduous shade trees. 15, 20 years from now, the power companies come in and just mow them all down because they got to get underneath there. So we're allowing ornamental trees to be 100% instead of the 50% that's currently now just under power lines. So we can keep the tree healthy, and instead of cutting them out after a while, just allow them, the smaller trees, it'll still meet the intent. And then one of the big things we did have intern, I think he presented to you guys, he did a landscape kind of our buffer yard plan. One of his main suggestions was diversify the buffer yards. Don't allow all deciduous shade trees, don't allow, you know, all shrubs. So we're trying to require diversity within those buffer yards. So we're putting in where you can only do 50% of them shade trees because it seems like that's the easiest for people to do, is put a couple of shade trees and get the seven and a half units of buffer yard. So we're saying we want shade trees, but we also want some of the other stuff that grows faster to be able to kind of make the buffer yard a little better for adjacent property owners. And then the other thing that we had kind of talked about at briefing is those alternative site plans we've been seeing quite a bit for when we're in drainage easements, electrical easements, gas easements. So we're adding a section to allow the planning director at his discretion to sign off on those things. Still require the landscaping, still require it in the front yard, but maybe not that first front yard setback where we're running, specifically 57th Street where Clint Ackman was doing, I mean, we had to come back every building he did because there was a drainage easement. He's still putting them in the front yard. He's still meeting the intent of the ordinance, but they weren't in that first 10 feet. And so that, this will allow the planning director to move those out of there without having to make them go through two hoops to get here, and to have you guys listen and approve everything because it makes total sense for them to be able to move them out of there. So those are our major changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve 6I.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
These all seem like good quality changes. Continue to update things and make sure the community is protected, and all makes a lot of sense to me.
Madam Chair, Ed, we appreciate you, Jason, your work on this, along with Shawna and everybody else that was involved. So good work.
We have a motion and a second on 6I. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Item 7, public input on non-agenda items. Five-minute comment period per individual.
Would anybody like to, in the audience, address the planning commission at this time? No? Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve, or to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Motion adjourned. Or motion adjourned, meeting adjourned. Thanks, Steve.